Good evening. My name is Jack Dearborn. And this is the April 3rd, 2018 zoning Board of Adjustments meeting. I am chairman. And tonight, we have one case. Before we do that, I have one administrative item we want to take care of, and that's the election of offices for 2018. With that said, I will accept nominations.
I would like to make the nomination for Jack Dearborn as chairman of the ZBA, and Mike Myers as vice chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Or are they in the form of motion?
Good.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Five zero zero. Okay. We have our first and only case for the evening, and that will appear. This case is 0118. This is Adam and Erwin Aaron Dallas. Are they here? Good. I was gonna say, it's gonna be a short meeting if you weren't. Okay. The way this works is, our zoning orders only allows buildings on Class 5 roads. That's a town-maintained road. There are other types of roads in the town of Ware. It's Class 6, which the town of Ware owns the road, but does not maintain the road. And then there are private roads, which is can be anything from a cow path to a well-groomed road, but is owned by the people who are on the road, or somebody privately owns it, not the town. That's the thing. So in order to get a building permit from you need to get a variance for a Class 6 road, a building lot. So, we're here tonight, and let me briefly just read, uh, let me briefly see how this works. What we will do is, I will read the application, front page, kinda give everybody, not only in this room, but people on TV, know what are we doing here this evening. And then I will ask the board if they have any questions. And if there are no questions, we will then put up, ask for a motion to accept the application. And why is that important? We will try to make a quick judgment, a judgment on this, whether this is completely filled out properly for us to hear a case. The last thing we want to do is hear a case when it's not properly filled out. Should we find any ways along the process of hearing the case that is not, we will stop at that point, and if necessary, ask the applicant to go back for more information, or if something I need to go off and talk to town council on, I will take that action. At that point, we will ask for a continuance. So, this evening, this is, the address of the applicant is 3 Shafted Drive, London Dairy, New Hampshire, 03053. The owner is Christopher and Robin Renault. And their address is 36 Old Dairy Road, London Dairy, New Hampshire, 03053. And the property address and location, 26 Sawyer Roadway, New Hampshire, 03281. Tax map lot, map 406, lot 176, zone residential. And a brief description of the property is east sidelines 456.35, made up of three sections. Western line is 363, rear line is 574.05. Frontage on Sawyer is 218.87. Total acreage, 2.82 acres plus or minus. Proposed existing use effective. We are intending to build a small family home on our, for our own living. Question reads as, "Why does your proposed use require zoning, appeal to zoning adjustment?" "This land is on a Class 6 road, which is, which as states in New Hampshire classifies, it is a road which has not been maintained and repaired by the town in suitable condition for travel for at least five successive years per RSA 229,57." Okay. Any questions from the board? I've seen the property. Stu's seen the property. I believe you've seen that too, right? And no questions? Then I will ask for a motion to accept the application so we can hear the case.
Move to accept.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Chip, you taking notes? Okay.
You too.
Any discussion? You too. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Five zero zero. Okay. At this point, whoever would like to speak to your application, and come up, come up front. And what we'd like you to do when we finally get to the points of hardship, there's five points of hardship. I'd like you to read it. Read the question, and read your answers. Not only, we gotta copy this. They don't have a copy. Nobody at home has a copy.
Sure.
So, it allows us to read it into the file till it's a permanent record of your application.
No questions?
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant before we start? Your name, sir?
Adam Dallas.
The five points of hardship.
So, point one, you're required to demonstrate that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to public interest because the structure that we're intending to build shall be within the building code for the town of Ware, with the appropriate frontage, setback, and sidelines. Additionally, it shall not put undue burden on the surrounding environment, already established community, with as minimal alterations to the landscape as possible. The proposed building will not lessen the potential value of the property, and will increase the tax base for the town as we will be new residents. Point two, the variance requested will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because the ordinance exists as a set of regulations to guide the construction and development of buildings within the town of Ware, which is exactly what we intend to follow through our proposition.
Three, please.
Point three?
Yes.
The, that through the granting of relief by variance, substantial justice will be done because this lot has been vacant with the last efforts to develop it over 30 years ago. This is exemplified by the previous plot plan, perk test, and septic design. Substantial justice will be done by granting a variance because this picturesque plot of land was intended to be built upon. Additionally, substantial justice will be done as this will increase the development of the town of Ware by bringing in new residents and tax income to the town. That by granting the variance, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because the surrounding properties will not be diminished as there are already numerous year-round homes on this Class 6 road, and will be adding to the existing community. In the construction of our home, we will adhere to the lot boundaries, not encroaching on other properties. We also believe that the development of this property will, if anything, raise the value of the surrounding area rather than having a vacant lot. Furthermore, we will be participating in the process of maintaining the Class 6 road. To qualify for a variance, you must demonstrate that denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship. Pursuant to applicable law, the test for unnecessary hardship is set forth into alternative parts. Parts A and B as follows. Part A, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, point one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and point two, that the proposed use is a reasonable one. Accordingly, while having the foregoing standards in part A in mind, please provide the following facts relative to your application. A, please describe the special conditions of your property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The surrounding properties in the direct area are similar, and our construction will be situated on a Class 6 road. Please indicate how owing the special conditions identified above. One, no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Sawyer Road has had properties on it for a number of years. Therefore, no substantial relationship between the ordinance provision and this property has existed for some time. Point two, the proposed use is a reasonable one. The proposed use is reasonable, as is in keeping with the fact that Sawyer Road already has homes. We are aiming to build another home within this Class 6 road, which will contribute to the community, and also increase the resident and tax base for the town of Ware. Developing a domicile upon this property would be considered reasonable use, and denial of this would cause undue hardship. Point B, if the criteria sub-paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist and only if, if and only if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. Accordingly, while having the foregoing standards in part B in mind, please provide the following facts relative to your application. B, please describe the special conditions of your property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The special conditions of this property are that it is built, that it will be built on a Class 6 road, which limits the granting of a building permit. Please indicate how owing to the special conditions identified above, your property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of it. The ordinance, section 17.1.1, states that no building permit shall be issued on any Class 6 or private road. Being that the Sawyer Road community has existed for a number of years within this Class 6 road, a home could not be built while being in conformance with the ordinance. Therefore, it's paramount that a variance be granted in order to develop on this lot, as a denial of the variance would result in undue hardship, as development of this land could not occur within its reasonable use.
Okay. There's a list of abuddhas that are attached. There's a property card. There's a quick claim deed. There is floor plan offered. Like... Like 1,100 square foot?
It's likely gonna be closer to around 640, with loft area for storage.
Oh, the loft is not a bedroom? It's just, it shows it as a bedroom.
Yeah. We actually, that was a provisional plan. We do have a slightly updated plan. It's still, still in progress.
But your intent is to be kinda like in this footprint?
Yeah.
Okay. And there is a annotated drawing showing the lot with a relief. And there is a copy of the tax map. Okay, you are 176. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so... Any questions of the applicant before we open it up? Not? Have a seat, please?
One, one question.
Sure.
I followed along here, and I just wanna be clear as to what the actual hardship is.
The hardship is that because it's on a Class 6 road, we wouldn't be able to obtain a building permit on that road because...
Because the zoning doesn't allow it?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a question.
Is there an association out there that maintains the road? Or is it just the proper owners? Do you have an agreement?
So, we did speak with Roger Overe on the road, who told us that there is no official maintenance agreement. He informed us that there is a gentleman at the end of the road who, he, he snowplows in the, in the winter, and whenever he's leaving, he will typically plow the road after the snow. The owners of their properties are responsible for their own driveway and stuff like that, but from what we were informed, there's no official maintenance agreement.
Okay. You get up a seat, please?
Okay.
Let's see here. Help me count dots. In the immediate area on Sawyer looks to be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Looks like seven of the 10 lots on Sawyer in that area that are already subdivided, already have houses on them. Am I correct? Kinda hard to see dots.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
So, so a majority of the lots... Do you know when the lot was actually created?
We don't know specifically, but we do know that the lot, from our research with when the previous, or the current owner previously purchased it, the prior one was in 1986. So, we know that has been subdivided since that was 1986.
Wow. I don't know how a Class 6 can be subdivided on a Class 6. That may not be accurate.
Okay.
You've probably been going back far enough, right?
Potentially not.
Well, I'm assuming that this being a subdivision, it had to have been before...
Predates zoning.
Predates zoning. I just wanted, so we don't have any hazards, but it wouldn't be here if it wasn't.
Back when they drew lines on the map and smiled at each other.
Right. Okay. The way I work the meeting from here else, I will ask if any approving abuddhas wish to come forward and speak. Then I'll ask, after they're all finished, if there are any. Any disapproving abuddhas would like to come forward to speak. And when that's, when that's done, I will ask if public at large and other boards wish to speak. And once that's done, I give the applicant an opportunity to come back up again, rebut anything, or clarify anything that somebody may have raised. Then I'll ask him to sit down, and I'll go through it one more time. Approving, disapproving, other boards, and public at large. And after that, the second time through, I will shut the meeting down, and then we will decide on the board who will take action this evening, unless there's something pops up that we don't know about. But the intention is, after we close the hearing, we will then vote on it. There'll be no more public input. So, anybody who is an approving abuddha would like to get up and speak on behalf of the application? Being none. Disapproving abuddhas wish to come up and speak? Being none. Other boards?
No.
Oh, you need to throw your hand up faster. Come up, come up.
I'm making an assumption this is Sawyer Road.
Your name, please?
Lisa Grollian.
And your question, miss?
So, unfortunately, the person who was going to come tonight couldn't make it.
Do you know where it is? Would you like to see where it is on the map?
Oh, I know where it is on the map. Yeah, but thank you. So, we just, we have some concerns as a neighborhood.
Okay, what are the concerns?
So, one, are the road is very, very narrow, as it is. Two cars can't go by at the same time. There are times when it's too icy for any cars to make it up the road. There's been times when we've had to park at the bottom and walk up, hike up. There's no one person who's in charge of the plowing. So, my understanding is that several of the people have been looking at the properties for sale on our road have been misinformed or misled, and told that somebody takes care of the plowing. There is no one person who does the plowing. As it is, some of us contribute to the road maintenance, and some residents don't contribute to the road maintenance. Everybody on the road that I'm aware of either has an all-wheel-drive or four-wheel-drive car, and we still have times we can't make it up.
What lot are you on there?
So, we are 33.
You on Sawyer's?
We're on Sawyer. Lisa, Purington-Grollian.
Okay. I didn't think 33 was on Sawyer.
And I apologize. I am not feeling well tonight.
33. Oh, I'm talking about the lot number, not...
Yeah, I don't know what 33 is. Sorry.
Would you like to point on his, and just tell us what it looks like? Yeah, they'll, they'll tell you what, what it is.
Yeah, I think... Anita, are you 174? I believe we're 175. Does it show what the concrete looks like, the shape of it? Can you?
That's good. What was your last name?
It's hyphenated, Purington-Grollian.
It's on the left-hand side, almost to the end.
I think we're 174.
No, you're on the other side, I think.
I don't, I, I, I don't know. I thought I was gonna be able to tell by the, by the shape. So, I think you're 174, and this is... I think we're on, he was saying... Well, where's 149? So, this is Sawyer coming up. Oh, no, that's...
Aren't you like 181 and 182, Lisa?
Oh, you know what? I am on the wrong side. I'm sorry.
You're on the wrong side of the road.
I think I'm 179.
Oh, you're right. I think you're 179, so, no, you'd be 1... Yeah, you're 179. So, we're 180. Sorry, I was looking at it upside down.
Because this makes sense, that this is his land. The guy that went up on the hill.
Yeah.
And this would be mine.
Yep. And then that's ours. Okay.
Pick your name off in this list. It'll be a lot associated with it. Okay. So, you are across, you are further up...
Further up in diagonal.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah. So, this past winter, just as an example, some of us were unable to leave for work because it was a tow truck trying to get a car that was stuck sideways. My neighbor owns a really large pickup truck, and has slid all the way backwards down the hill on the ice. I, myself, have been crossways in the road twice with an SUV, a four-wheel-drive SUV. And my neighbor, if he hadn't been on the other side of me, there's no way a tow truck or anything would have been able to get to me. I was stuck crosswise. So, luckily, he was, he had a tow strap and was able to get me out. And there have been several other incidents where the stream, there's a culvert that goes through, and I have video, by the way. I've got video of the road in the snow. I've got video of our stream in the back. And Anita can probably attest to this, too. That stream, which is normally a trickle during the spring melt, sometimes turns into a raging river. So, there have been times where that river is going across that culvert. So, we've realized it was rising, and been able to park our cars over on the other side. But there's not really enough parking for emergencies like that for the existing houses up there, let alone for more people. There's also not enough parking down at the end of the road when there's ice, and there have been a few times where... There was one time that I had to take my snowmobile to get to my car. And the last time a house went in on our road, the road agent had the builder upgrade the road. They were supposed to maintain ditch lines. They did not do that. They actually filled in the ditch lines to widen it. All of the ditches were filled to widen the road, and I wrote this down because Matt, my neighbor, was supposed to come for this. Resulting in more damage and washout as soon as spring came. We were not compensated for the careless work or damage done by the person who did the work, and we had to fix it. We are still without proper drainage. The builder was also told to build a retaining wall. That wall fell down within the first year. Nothing was done to correct that. And while the builder was widening the road, he dropped a boulder in the path of the existing culvert and just left it there. So, if road improvements are required prior to any houses being built, which they certainly need to be, we hope the town will require the builders to hire capable and insured construction companies to do the work. And we also ask that thorough inspections are done along the way by qualified town employee. There's, and again, I've got video, I've got pictures.
If you don't have any tonight, it's hearsay.
We're asking you what you have. I think you've already covered...
Yeah.
...the conditions.
Yeah, I do have them, if you didn't wanna see them.
Well, that's heard us, to us, share them all.
I think you spoke on it.
Got it.
Thank you.
And again, oh, the other, the only other thing that I didn't mention is, there's two neighbors right now that currently do plow, and they're not in charge of plowing by any means. One of them is moving, and the other one works odd hours, so we have, we have that issue, too.
Anything else, please?
No.
Okay. Anybody else who wish to speak? Disapproving, disapproving abuddha? Being none? Other boards? Public at large? Would you like to speak again, Mrs. Dallas? So, again, we were aware that there is currently no formal agreement as far as maintaining the, the road goes. But something that we're absolutely willing to do is change that and come up with possibly some sort of formal agreement, contribute in whatever way we can to help maintain in the road. And obviously, we are aware of the potential risks of it being on a Class 6 road that it's not maintained by, by the town.
That's a civil matter. It's nothing to do with it.
Sure.
Okay. Any rebuttal you wish to have again, second time? The lady in the back? Okay. Good. I wanna make sure everybody got two shots. Thank you. Any questions of the board? If not, I'll close down the public hearing. Okay, at this point, at... What do you got? Eight fifty, uh, excuse me, 7:55? Fifty-six? Oh, you're ahead, you're behind, or whatever. Okay. With that, at this point, I will ask for, now, we, what we do is, always ask for a motion in the positive, because it's real simple. Yes means yes, no's means no, rather than having reverse logic. Okay. So, we will take up each one of these, five points of hardship. The fifth one, even though it's got multiple paths, we'll take it up to the single. And you need to get at least three yeses on each one of these. Doesn't have to be the same combination of people. Any one item of these five getting less than three is basically, you don't get it. It's one striking route. So, that's the way this works. So, with that said, I'd like to have a motion to, motion to, or in affirmative, for one, Stu? Point one?
Move to, except point one.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
Nice read. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
No.
So, two? You're no?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's three abstention?
Abstention.
You stay?
Yeah.
What do you?
I have thoughts on either way, so I feel I'm, I'm in the middle.
Okay. All right. With that, it's two, two, and one. Is that correct? Two yes, two no's, and one abstention. Okay, second one?
Move to, except point two. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
And?
Abstain.
Stu, what do you?
Abstain.
So, we got a two, one, two. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Three, please.
Move to, except point two. Uh, three, excuse me, point three.
Second?
Yeah.
Discussion? Take none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Abstention?
Abstain.
Okay, so that's it.[1682.88] Two, one, two again, and number...
Move to accept point four.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose?
No.
One, and two abstention?
Abstain.
Stu?
Aye, so...
You said aye, so it's a three, one, one.
Move to accept point five in its entirety.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Abstention?
Abstain.
Okay, so it's a, it's a two, one, two. Good. Okay, so it does not pass. You have, technically, you have, I don't know the exact time, is it thirty days?
Thirty days.
How much?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. You come in for a rehearing of material difference from what's been presented here today. And if we choose to rehear it, we will post the rehearing date. We choose not to rehear it, because there's nothing material, then your next avenue will have to be at Superior Court. Okay?
Is there any opportunity for us to partner for wires?
You heard it. This is a discussion. This is, these are the votes, so there's nothing more than this. It'll reflect in the minutes. We should have the minutes published, one hundred and forty-four hours, which is six days, and there'll be four minutes. With that, that's it for, for the meeting, for the, any public meeting at this time. We're now gonna move on to approve prior minutes, so you welcome to stay, but for most part, the meeting is over. You have nothing else to do, you can stay. If you have something else to do, you can go, so. Okay, so we have...
Excuse me, I have a second question. I just wanted, what was the reason why?
We don't ask questions. There's, there's no discussion anymore. We close?
No, I don't have a question. No, I just want to know what the, what the reason, not the reason, what is the, they had to file with you guys to build on a Class Six road because of why?
See that guy?
State law.
It's a state law? And what was the state law? I was just curious.
We don't give...
I, I was, I was just told to come here.
You can only build on a Class Five road.
We don't give legal advice.
On a Class Five road? Then why not a Class Six?
This is why I don't...
Because it's illegal.
We gotta stop this, miss.
It's not a maintained road.
We have to stop this. We're not gonna give legal advice. You wish to call it tomorrow?
I'm not getting, no, I don't have any, I didn't know why I was here. I just got a letter to say, to come here for a meeting. I was just wondering what the, I didn't get that.
Would you call him tomorrow, please?
Sure.
Because I don't want to take up this, we only hear cases in this room. No, that's okay.
He's in the book.
I don't even know...
That's a closely guarded...
You got one of these?
I didn't get that.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, like, find one.
And the property owner actually tried to call this committee, and nobody returned his phone call.
See that guy?
Didn't call me.
Five two nine, two two, five oh. That's it, hold on.
Yeah, I'm at, add a card, sir.
Five two nine.
I'll give you one of these.
I was just told to come here, I didn't understand why I was asked to come. Thank you, Chuck.
We also have an extension. Case ten twelve, this is the extension for, variance extension for SHB properties, four eleven, MAP four eleven, one fifty-one dash one dash fifteen, I don't know what that is. Anyways, that was written, MAP four eleven dash one fifty-two dash one dash fifteen.
That's the case number.
Uh, oh, it can't be, is it? Because the case would have been ten twelve.
Where are you?
I'm on the end of the...
Is this the one we're meant?
I think the first two numbers are correct.
Yeah, MAP four eleven.
Yeah, one fifty-two?
Yeah.
I don't know what one dash fifteen is.
One through fifteen, there's fifteen lots there.
Oh, so they're getting it for all of them?
Yeah. It's for the whole development.
Where's, where's this from?
The old apple orchard.
Oh.
Oh, now I remember, yeah, you're right, sorry.
Okay.
Across the street from where his commercial land is.
Yeah.
Who's?
Yours.
Mine?
Yeah.
I'm the only one owning the commercial? Okay. This one here is a question of, back before the state changed the rules, it was a two year, was this a one year?
It, it was two.
Now we're down to...
One.
And this is to do it for one now?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, there's a copy of the latest approval in there for a year.
Could I have a motion, please, to accept the extension of case ten twelve?
I'll make the motion to accept case ten twelve.
Hmm.
Yeah. For the best...
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
And do we have any discussion? Being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Zero, abstention, zero. Okay. Now we have some minutes.
So where do we turn this at?
Yeah.
Sweet.
How far are we going back?
This is for...
You should only have one set of minutes for the last meeting.
October third, twenty seventeen, dry.
I wasn't at that one. I thought I was, but...